Welcome to the Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021 Regular School Board Meeting, which I now call to order. Our invitation invocation tonight is done by Horton Towns, the Director of the Handicapped Ministries at St. Paul United Methodist Church in Largo. Following that, we will have the National Anthem performed by Griffin Collins and a dancer, Erica Wolf, will also be with him at that time. They're from the Leadership Conservatory for the Arts at Tarpon Springs High School. The Director is Mr. Kevin Ford. If you would stand, please. Welcome.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, I come today with a heart of gratitude and words of encouragement for the school board and all the employees of this wonderful board. Oh Father, I want to reflect back on some of the warm memories I have of serving through the church at St. Paul United Methodist Church with our handicapped ministry. A ministry for the special needs adults scattered all throughout Pinellas County and some of the ways that we've worked together in community with the school board. I reflect back to May of 2014, when we went to Paul B. Stevens to do a talent show and the ones that went from our handicapped ministry were former students and most were graduates from Paul B. Stevens. Oh, what a day of rejoicing that was to be able to be reunited with teachers, principals, and others that they knew. And you could just see from the excitement of the crowded room that gathered together for the day of rejoicing, what a blessed day it was. Then we go to 2015, when we went to Nina Harris. We had one of our group homes, oh Father, that had several people. In fact, there were about 18 people who came. It was a great big PTA meeting that was being held there and they had a room that was specially set up for the handicapped to do a couple of songs that they had learned to sing. And we had to put out extra chairs and from a standing room only audience, they sang to the top of their voices and how it was such a rejoicing day. And then, also, oh Father, in that same year, in November, we went to the Great American Teach-In over at Ponce de Leon. We brought two or five star students from the handicapped ministry and put on the Donnie and Janet Show. Oh, what a day that was, oh Father, when you could see the kids, most of them first graders from the special needs classes there, they gathered together and they could see Donnie and Janet put on their performances in costume and singing and dance. What a rejoicing day that was, oh Father. And also, just recently, through our youth and volunteers at the church, we've launched a program called Jump Start. We've been working with Largo Middle School children who've been coming over on a weekly basis. Of course, the pandemic played a role in not even be able to offer that this year. But anyway, it was an opportunity for the students to come, get to work on their homework and also to have an opportunity to socialize, have an opportunity to fellowship and have time of encouraging words and also to share a wonderful meal together. And finally, oh Father, and certainly not the least, for the past seven years, the school has been involved in what we call the Back to School Jubilee, where we have been able to deliver hundreds and hundreds of backpacks for students that are in part of the school board here, that are in the Largo area, that come in for backpacks, hundreds of tennis shoes that have been delivered. Also, oh Father, they've always have gone home with a load of school supplies. These are just some of the ways, oh Father, that we've been able to work together in community and bring harmony and show that by working together, we've been blessed beyond measure. And in closing, oh Father, I just want to mention specifically the school board here, all the thousands of the employees that work under their directions and guidance. And we ask that you would bless them with your peace, your strength, your power, your love and your encouragement, not only for today, but for all the days ahead. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you, Mr. Towns, and that was absolutely beautiful. Again, from the Tarpon Springs High School Leadership Conservatory for the Arts. Thank you very much. All right, we will now move on to the video that we're going to have. Every year, Pinellas County school students create an outstanding works of art, which are recognized at the annual Scholastic Arts Awards. While the ceremony looked a little different this year, we celebrated our students' talents and creativity at a combination in-person and virtual event streamed live from Gibbs High School's Grand Theater. So let's meet a few of these talented artists and learn about their creations.
Good evening and welcome to the 2021 Pinellas County Art Region of the Scholastic Art Awards Virtual Ceremony, being streamed live here from the Grand Theater Gallery at Gibbs High School in St. Petersburg, Florida. It is truly amazing what our Pinellas students and teachers have accomplished in classrooms and at home, given these very challenging times.
Well, this is from my junior portfolio. My junior portfolio is based around mermaids, but I wanted to incorporate my love of the Renaissance art. So Merma Lisa was, of course, my biggest piece out of the portfolio and it, of course, took Mona Lisa and appropriated her into a mermaid, kind of just discovering what she would have looked like underneath the rest of that frame.
When I made this piece, shortly after, I kind of felt like this. Like, it's kind of ironic because I was trying to symbolize a period of my life where I really felt like everything that I was making was kind of like not worth it and not good enough. Well, I used like random stamps that I had and different splatters of paint and I used ash from our fire pit to like, because for burnout, when you feel like that, it really just makes you feel exactly like the ashes and stuff. So I mixed those with water. This ring of matches, as you go closer to this side, it's not burned. The other side is more burned. It's kind of like a timer almost.
This piece is a part of my sustained investigation for the eighth year portfolio. This is my best friend, Maddie, and the idea behind the artwork is to have like water be like a different reality and all the different reflections and ripples trying to make the viewers be like they're a part of the water or like inside the water, like they're being an escape from reality too.
Oh, it's such an honor and a privilege to recognize these students who've had the courage to be creative and who have been diligent in going forward and sharing their art with all of us. It's interesting to see the variety of art that students have contributed, the complexity of the pieces and the skill that these students have really honed to be able to share with us.
Students from all across the county can participate and just seeing the families present here, looking at the work, it just lets me know that we're doing a great job in Pinellas County, educating and advocating for art.
As you can see, we've had some of our board members in person attending that, as well as some online. I saw Dr. Carr as well as Ms. Edmunds. So they've always do such marvelous work. I'm just always amazed at how talented our students are. And maybe that's because I have very little talent when it comes to drawing, for sure. But anyway, they did a wonderful job and it was enjoyed by all. So, thank you. All right, let's move on to the introduction of professional and community organization representatives. Madam Isabella Mascheranes, our Public Information Officer, to introduce them.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Grego and staff. It is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. From the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, PCTA, we have Nancy Velardi, President. From ACE, Arts for a Complete Education Coalition, we have Rondi Hillisso. She is joining us virtually. There are no members of the media in attendance today. Today, we have a presentation from the Student Rights and Responsibility Committee. Please welcome Chloe Edgman and Kaia Cullen from Tarpon Springs High School and their Principal, Lisa Fadolidas.
Hi, guys. I'm Chloe. I'm representing Tarpon today. I wanted to start off by saying that our school's been through a lot this year, but we've come through it very, very strong. We started off at the end of last year being completely virtual and we've come very, very far. I'm actually in person and so is Kaia. We are very happy to be at school. We've been able to enjoy the new construction at our school for the conservatory, as well as for the rest of us with our new turf. It's allowed for a much smoother flow throughout the day. It allows us to almost avoid some areas where we know there's a lot of clutter of students, so we can still social distance with all of that. With COVID, it's made certain things more difficult, such as some of the students are online, some of us are in person. However, we've been able to deal with it very, very well. We've come to realize that Tarpon is very, very strong and we're coming out of it super, super well. One of the many things that we've gotten added to our school is Sponger. That's our cadaver dog. I work with that dog very, very closely because I'm in the academy there. It's very interesting for us. It's, it allows us to kind of thrive in that academy. It allows the academy's purpose to teach us our skills become more. So I love it very much and the academy is doing very, very well for itself. As far as the conservatory goes, Kaia's going to explain more about the band, but as far as guard goes, they're doing very well. The new turf yard that we have allows for us to be able to practice and to throw our flags and our rifles and make sure that we have plenty of room to do so, so that a way their craft can be perfected. One of the many things that Tarpon has been able to offer us this year is just a home. It allows for the people that kind of missed out on the end of the year, they missed their friends, they missed their teachers. It allows us to come back and be like, oh, my gosh, my family's here. It's a whole nother world. One of the other people that were supposed to be here, Bree, she's not able to be with us here today. She is actually off visiting a college. We're all seniors, so we're kind of sad that we get to leave, but we know that Tarpon has prepped us very, very well for this. This week is actually UF Decisions, University of Florida. It's their decision week, so we're all kind of on edge for that, us seniors anyways. It's very exciting. They tell us from the time that we start high school to the time that we ended that college, 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 that's all we want is to be able to go to college, to succeed, to have a career, to just grow. And Tarpon has been able to provide us with what we need in order to succeed in college, whether it's classes, whether it's teachers, whether it's just helpful guidance from our administration. They prep us. They really do. I honestly, I was so excited last week when I got my Florida State University decision. I got accepted and I told Ms. Fadolidas right away. I was like, Fadolidas, I got accepted. And she was so happy for me and it was such a joy to be able to see how excited she was for me. Our teachers and our administration, they care about us and I would love more than anything to tell all of the students that they are appreciated, that they, they are wanted. We want you guys to succeed and they want us to succeed. They're here for us and as a student, that means the world. I'm currently a part of so many things, actually, in school. I'm part of Student Council. I started Student Council at the beginning of last year. I didn't quite know about it at the beginning, but once I made the right friends, they showed me, they introduced it to me with one of our teachers, Ms. Deal. She is amazing. I actually became junior class president. I got to plan prom, I got to help plan homecoming and help with student activities, give out cap and gowns. And that was, it was amazing. On top of like going to class, I was able to actually be involved with the school and that in itself is completely different than what I thought it was going to be. I thought it was like, oh, you're just going to go do this or you're just going to help this teacher out for the day. No, I actually got to go and pick out flowers for prom. I got to go to Innisbrook and decorate the room for homecoming. I got to blow up a million balloons and it's, it's amazing. It's things that they don't really tell you whenever you're entering into high school from middle school. It's things that you just experience and go with. And going right along with that, I'm also a part of the National Honor Society. We work hand in hand with Student Council very often, such as in December, we had our Christmas food drive where we collect food for families that can't afford it and they can come to our school and we'll, we'll give it to them. Fortunately, we were able to do that this year. With COVID, it was a little bit different. Usually, we collect food throughout the school, but Ms. Deal actually went out and she purchased like over hundreds of turkeys and potatoes and pies and we bagged them and the people came by and we put them in the back of their cars and we got to see their faces light up with such joy that they were able to provide food for their family. And as a student in both NHS and Student Council, giving back is very, very important to me. It teaches you that you can do so much for one single person and it's not something to be taken lightly. It'll touch you in a way that you never thought it would. And with that, I think I'm going to let Kaia kind of take over and talk about a little of our Cambridge program.
Hi, my name is Kaia Cullen and I will be talking a little bit about our school's Cambridge program. I went to both Tarpon Springs High School and Tarpon Springs Middle School. Obviously, I'm still at Tarpon Springs High and I have followed through with the Cambridge program since my sixth grade year. I'm now going into my seventh year of participating in the Cambridge program. And one amazing thing about the Cambridge program is that the curriculum is definitely a way to push the students to work harder and to reach higher goals and higher standards for themselves. And that's one thing that I absolutely love about the Cambridge program is that I've noticed over the years with my growth and perseverance, especially through the help and nurturing of my teachers, that through this program, I ended up doing things that I had no thought that I would ever be able to accomplish. Everybody at Tarpon Springs High is definitely a huge family, especially in a participant, as a participant of the Cambridge program. Since it's such a rigorous curriculum and it's a lot harder for people to get into, you follow through with the same people all throughout high school and sometimes you follow through with them in middle school and in high school, depending on if you go to the same school. And it's just amazing to see how you can grow and adapt and change and better yourself with both your teachers and the people that you tend to make a family out of. And one thing, another thing that I absolutely love about the Cambridge program as well is that since it's a smaller class size for particular students due to the fact that it's, again, a rigorous, rigorous curriculum, it's much more hands-on with the teachers. You're able to discuss a lot more, you're able to learn a lot more from your teachers, more one-on-one and from your peers as well, since you have a lot of them using classes as you, which is absolutely fabulous, I would love to say, due to the fact that other schools' students don't really have the opportunity of experiencing that. I would say that the Cambridge program is the best decision I could have ever made for myself to put myself in because I would love to say that it definitely helped prepare me for college. I feel a lot more confident in myself than I would if I were to take just regular classes and/or AP. But on top of the fact, I take both AP and Cambridge classes and I feel so confident in my capabilities of excelling further in college due to the fact that I was able to grow with both my peers and my teachers. I'm also going to be covering a little bit on the conservatory that we have at Tarpon Springs High. I was a participant in the dance program at Tarpon. I wasn't a participant in the guard program, Chloe was, but one beautiful thing about the conservatory is that not only do they teach you to better yourself and your craft, which mine was dance, they also better, they help better yourself as a person. One big thing that the conservatory is huge on is the concept of leadership. At the conservatory, they teach all of the students and all of the peers of each individual classes that they should better themselves as leaders. So not only are they becoming a better person for themselves, but they're also becoming better people for those around them, which I would say is an incredible thing for Tarpon High because we have so many students in the conservatory that they just follow through and really realize that, oh, wow, this is something that I want to be. I want to be a leader in life. I want to help other people realize that they could be leaders and they could help others as well. And having that in our school definitely makes everybody more connected and more friendly and open to being better as people and just being family overall. I'm both a participant in Student Council and in NHS, as well as Chloe. I am the Student Council Vice President for the Executive Board this year. I was also on the board last year for junior class, but I was secretary. So I've been a participant for about two years now, which, just as Chloe, I didn't know about it and so she introduced it to me, actually. And I was able to realize how much the Student Council actually does for our school and how much we do for others of our class and of the upper and lower classes, especially with planning senior events, planning underclassmen events and just overall making sure that the school for our peers is definitely in running order. Chloe briefly discussed about how the UF decisions were going to be announced this week. I can't wait for that. I'm waiting for my announcement as well. I was recently accepted into three colleges, Stetson, Embry, and I can't remember the other one sadly, but Embry-Riddle is my college, my top one, that I was hoping to get into because I'm planning on majoring in astrophysics and astronomy and I was beyond thrilled to find out that I got accepted into Embry-Riddle's astrophysics program. So the very first person that I told when I got accepted into Embry-Riddle was our physics teacher at Tarpon High. His name is Mr. Pretty and I've been with him for my junior and senior year because I absolutely love his physics class. He's a phenomenal teacher, as much as almost everybody is at our school and especially the Cambridge teachers as well. They're so phenomenal and they help all of us grow. But I did make sure to tell my physics teacher that I got accepted into that program because he watched me and he helped me grow for two years and better myself in the physics program. So when I had the honor of telling one of my favorite teachers that I was accepted for astrophysics and astronomy, it was honestly an emotional experience because these teachers here at Tarpon really, truly care about all of the students and the look on Mr. Pretty's face when I told him that I wanted to pursue something that he has an aspiration for was just one of, one of the best experiences I could have ever said that I've ever gone through. And overall, everything that we do at Tarpon is just very connected and it genuinely does feel like a family here. I think that's pretty much it for myself. Thank you so much for having us.
And thank you both for sharing all of the wonderful things that you're involved with, as well as what's going on at Tarpon High School, Tarpon Springs High School. We had the opportunity to be there last week and, and visit and experience some of the programs that they're talking about, the Leadership Conservatory and being able to see the new facility and everything that was there. We got to meet Sponger the dog and maybe saw more of him than we needed to. But there was, you know, just a real sense and the word came up twice with them, family. There was a real sense of family at that school and, you know, it was a, it was a joy to be there. So, thank you both for sharing again and I want to thank Principal Fadolidas for their, her leadership. She's doing a great job up there and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much for being our tour guide, as well as everything that you're doing at Tarpon Springs. We appreciate it.
Thank you. It was a pleasure having you all. Hope you enjoyed the day and I'm very proud of our student representatives today, both our speakers and also our student performers that opened this meeting tonight.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You as well. All right, we will now find out if there are any amendments to the agenda. Dr. Grego?
That was, that I removed 7.14. This was the agreement with Harvard Jolly Architectural Firm and this is for our partnership with YMCA. The attorneys for this agreement added some things at the very last minute last Friday evening and Mr. Herwick and I just decided it's not urgent, but we, we decided to pull this, review all of those changes and then resubmit it. So we look forward to bringing this back and I can assure the board it will not delay the project and it's just, we need to do our due diligence along the way. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Board members, are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? All right, seeing done, I will take a motion to adopt the amended agenda. Okay, Mrs. Long made the motion. Do we have a second? And Ms. Hine made the second. So we have a motion and a second to adopt the amended agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. And it passes 7-0. We'll move down to special order. It's a presentation of a proclamation designating March 1st through the 5th, 2021, as newspaper and education. and Education Week. Do we have a motion to adopt the proclamation? Okay, Mrs. Kane, thank you. And second by Mrs. Long. All right, Dr. Greggo?
Yes, board members, I certainly want to, as you are today, recognizing the Times and Tampa Times for their partnership with our school district. And Holly Slaughter, our elementary reading and language arts specialist, works very closely with them, and I'd ask that she present this proclamation to you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Pinellas County Schools has had a longstanding relationship with the Tampa Bay Times Newspapers and Education Program. Today, I'm really proud to tell you that students, parents, and teachers have digital access to a wealth of original, standards-aligned, resources designed for teachers of all subjects and grade levels. These digital resources, now more than 108,000 digital access per week, include special lesson plans, designed special reports, hands-on activities, summer learning activities, including the popular reading with the RACE program. The goal is still the same: create a generation of critical readers, critical thinkers, engaged citizens, and consumers. And for those of us who prefer to still read the old-fashioned way with text in hand, the Tampa Bay Times still provides the Wednesday and Sunday printed editions to our schools. At the present time, the Newspapers and Education Program provides nearly 5,000 print copies of the Times on Wednesdays and Sundays to teachers in Pinellas County at no charge to the school district, schools, teachers, or families. So now I'd like to introduce to you Developmental Specialist Sue Bedry. She's a newspaper and education staff member who will join us virtually and who will share details about the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being a partner with the Tampa Bay Times. We are so proud to partner with Tampa, with the Pinellas County Schools. Last year, in 2019, 2020, we served more than 520 teachers in more than 160 schools in Pinellas County. And we provide print and digital editions as well as original educational publications to Pinellas County Schools. And we are proud to partner with the school district to help our students become lifelong readers as well as committed citizens and students who will become better citizens throughout their lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you and your furry friend for joining us. All righty. Is that the end of your portion of it? All right. So Mrs. Long, if you would read the proclamation, please.
Proclamation, Newspaper and Education Week. Whereas research demonstrates that the best way to help children discover the joy of reading and becoming lifelong learners is to involve them early and often. And whereas helping a child learn and love to read improves a student's trajectory for success in school and beyond. And whereas research shows that students who learn using the newspaper as an educational resource are more likely to become lifelong readers and informed and engaged citizens. And whereas Newspaper in Education is an international program that encourages the use of the daily newspaper as a living textbook for students from primary through adult education levels. And whereas for more than 40 years, the Tampa Bay Times Newspaper in Education Program has served educators, students, and families by providing classroom newspapers, companion materials, and instructional support. And whereas Newspaper in Education Week is commemorated and celebrated annually during the first full school week in March. Now, therefore, the School Board of Pinellas County does hereby recognize March 1st through the 5th, 2021, as Newspaper in Education Week and encourage students to read the newspaper daily, in school, and at home, to enhance and enrich their lives.
Very good, thank you. And we now have a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation. Are there any comments from board members? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. And it passes seven-zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we now move to the public comment on the agenda. Members of the public have three opportunities to address the board when we gather for our meetings. The first opportunity is to speak during public comment on agenda items. The next opportunity is when there is a hearing, most of which are policies. Lastly, after the meeting is adjourned, we will remain for public participation when speakers may address items pertaining to the business of the district. During the public comment, board members are here to listen. This is not a time for us to engage in discussion or debate. We will not take any formal action on information brought forward unless it's pertaining to an agenda item. However, the board and superintendent may refer you to the proper staff person to help you work through your concerns. The board is committed to a standard of civility and decorum in our conduct of our meetings. Please assist us in maintaining a civil and constructive environment by confining your comments to the business of the district and refrain from intemperate or rude comments. Thank you very much. Do we have any speakers on agenda items, Mrs. Simonetti?
Board members and Dr. Greggo, we have no speakers for specific agenda items this evening.
All right, thank you. And we have unfinished business, a public hearing to consider the amendment to policy 2470, Education in English Language Learners. This is a second reading and there are no changes. Dr. Greggo? Oh, do we have a motion?
A motion.
Okay, we have a motion to accept and by Mrs. Long. And a second? Okay, Mrs. Edman, thank you. Dr. Greggo?
Yes, Madam Chair and board members, thank you for taking up this policy 2470. As you addressed this also in your recent workshop, and this deals with some changes to the board's policy with our English language learners. And Leanna Eisen, Director of Strategic Planning and Policy, will review it once again for you and the public.
Okay, go ahead. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Greggo, staff, and community. Today, we bring forward the amendment to the policy 2470, Education of English Language Learners, for public hearing and vote of approval. There have been no changes since the first reading. As discussed during the board workshop on December 8th and the first reading at the board meeting held on January 12th, the policy amendments being proposed update the terminology and classification in our policy to meet the federal Every Student Succeeds Act and state definitions, including changing the subgroup name from English Language Learners to English Learners, which is consistent with ESSA. And upon approval of the policy change, the name of the policy will also reflect this change. Adding a definition section that describes the term English Learners and the various classifications within the subgroup, which are based on the student's English language progression and proficiency. The amendments also provide clarity for all stakeholders in ensuring equitable grading practices with delineated accountability for teachers and students, such as clarifying grading requirements and expectations by EL classification and for teachers and students, and adding and rearranging the language within the policy to help all stakeholders better understand the supporting and progression processes and procedures for English learners. With that, we bring forward for public hearing and vote for approval, policy 2470, Education of English Language Learners.
Good, thank you. Now, this is a second here, a second reading. So Mrs. Simonetti, are there any speakers?
We have no speakers for this public hearing.
All right, thank you. Any comments from the board members, questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Long making the motion, Mrs. Edman seconding it. To consider the amendment to policy 2470, Education of English Language Learners. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we now have the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Is that Ms. Kane? Okay, Mrs. Kane made the motion. Is there a second? Mrs. Long made the second. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. It passes seven-zero. Thank you. We now move to the non-consent. Setting a public hearing and authorizing the advertisement of a public hearing for the adoption of instructional materials. Do we have a motion? Okay, Mrs. Kane made the motion. Do we have a second? Mrs. Edman, thank you. All right, Dr. Greggo?
Yes, Madam Chair and the school board, this is statutory requirement of this board to have a public hearing. And this one is the setting of the public hearing to authorize for the instructional materials purchasing. Mr. Kevin Hendrick, Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, will brief the board once again, as I know you covered this during our last workshop in Tarpon Springs and for the general public's knowledge too.
Thank you, Dr. Greggo. Good evening, board members. Dr. Greggo and staff, it's my pleasure to ask the board to set a public hearing to consider the adoption of instructional materials. For some background that we covered at the workshop and for the public, each year, teaching and learning forms committees to adopt instructional materials for the following school year for a five- or six-year cycle as determined by the state of Florida. This year, the adoption committees focus on English language arts, and they're especially important because we have new standards coming to English language arts for our state. The best standards or benchmarks for excellent student thinking are phasing in to our students in grades K through 2 next year and all grades the following school year. This adoption process requires a public hearing, and we're excited tonight to ask for you to set that public hearing. But what's especially important for the public to know tonight is that between March 1st and March 21st, they can go online and review the materials. The instructional materials link can be found on the front page of the school district website, and it's there that they will see all the materials up for consideration for the public hearing. The public hearing would be set in March for comment. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Hein?
Hi, thank you. I just want to say thank you. You know, all the information you gave us at our workshop and the times we've talked on the phone, there's so much work goes into the review of these materials. And I just wanted to encourage the public, I know a lot of people have questions and ideas and in the curiosity around what goes into selecting our instructional materials, this is the perfect place to plug in. This is the perfect place to show up and ask your questions and look at the information. It is well and thoughtfully researched, so I just wanted to encourage that. And then I also wanted to ask, I know last summer we started a committee that was really focused on ensuring that our curriculum was inclusive and accessible. Did that dovetail with these ELA choices?
Yes, so the committee was formed and it's still in operation. We meet each month to review different parts of our curriculum, English Language Arts and Social Studies. But as part of the review process, the members of committees, which include the public, include teachers, district staff, and folks from all parts of our community, they use a rubric that measures in part cultural relevancy. So it looks at alignment to standards, it looks at supports for students with disabilities, supports for EL students, it looks at how they appeal to all students across all parts of our community, and so that's part of the process as well.
Excellent. I also wanted to mention, I think it's, well, I know that we are doing this especially because of this shift to the best standards. And so you provided a schedule of what's going on over the next several years as those shifts happens. But then we also do it on a rolling basis. I believe it was every six years, each topic is addressed, is that right?
That's correct. So this year is English Language Arts, last year was World Languages and Career Technical Education, the coming year is mathematics.
Okay, so there's lots of opportunities to engage and participate, ask questions, and participate in the instructional materials part. Wonderful, thank you.
All right, good, thank you. Anything else? Anyone else? All right. So we have a motion made by Mrs. Kane and a second made by Mrs. Edman. To set the public hearing and authorize the advertisement of the public hearing for the adoption of instructional materials. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. It passes seven-zero. Our next item is to request approval of changes to certain school board meeting times and locations. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Okay. Mrs. Long, do we have a second? Okay, Ms. Hein, second. Dr. Greggo, would you like to speak to this?
I could start it off and then really, we started this discussion in our last workshop. You know, we set these meetings and the locations, and I want to, first of all, applaud the board for trying to get out into the community and welcome individuals there, and this was pre-COVID. Also, we attempted to, as you note, to get to St. Pete High School because of the massive renovation that's taking place there. Two things, one is the COVID has changed our lives in terms of, you know, larger groups coming in. And secondly, as Mr. Herbig continues to inform me, we're still under construction. So it'd be my advice that we hold that board meeting that's scheduled for the 27th here back in the building. However, if there is a desire to have a similar workshop into a school in the St. Petersburg area as we did with Tarpon Springs, certainly we can do so. I did reach out to Mike Hernandez at Northeast, and there was a comment made that it's always nice to be in a school where we don't have to break, and the culinary program and the students, given the situation this year, have not been able to serve outside individuals and open up their restaurants. So they're always looking for groups to come in. So if it's the board's pleasure, we can certainly work on our workshop that's scheduled for the 20th to be at Northeast High School, have the April 27th board meeting back in this location. The second item on the, is the November 9th, which is a school board organizational meeting, and that's just the flipping, as Mrs. Cook, you so found, and I appreciate that, that the organizational meeting happened after the school board meeting and not vice versa. So those are the changes that we're asking for. So at this time, I think it's appropriate for the board to have some discussion about those.
And we won't be voting necessarily on the workshop. The item in front of us is the two meetings, and we'll agree or not, we'll make a decision on the workshop after we take this vote. So we're open for comments at this point? Okay, Ms. Hein?
I really enjoyed being up at Tarpon Springs last week for the workshop. That was great, and I appreciate what the board did last year. My understanding is you had the idea this year to have a meeting north and a meeting south, an actual school board meeting that where people could come and make public comment, and I definitely would like for that to happen next year. And I just want to mention that the idea of it being one of our, you know, it has to be an evening meeting, because you can't do a school board meeting at the school during school, school is happening. And then the reason why it doesn't make sense to have an evening meeting at a school right now is because of the changes of air required in order to have the HVAC system fully healthy in the morning for the return of everything. I just want to make very clear that we are all visiting schools at different times. We are very comfortable in classrooms and happy to go there and be there and hold meetings there. And I'm certainly in support of holding our workshop at Northeast. I think that that would be excellent, and next year, look forward to being able to hold our school board meetings at schools.
All right. Okay, any other board members? I see a lot of heads shaking, so I think many of the things that Ms. Hein said, we're all in agreement. So I see nothing else, so we'll go ahead and we have a motion and a second to approve the changes to certain board meetings, times, and locations. That is for the April meeting as well as our November meetings. So all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. All righty, it passes unanimously. Now, this is just kind of a thumbs up or a thumbs down, or we can go ahead and officially vote, but the recommendation is for us to have a workshop at Northeast High School. Is there, again, I'm seeing a lot of heads, so is there anyone that would not? Thumbs up? Not an official vote, so we're doing, all right. So Dr. Greggo, we'll move forward with making plans for our April workshop to be at Northeast.
We will do that. Thank you, board members.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we move on to new business. Dr. Greggo, items introduced by the superintendent.
Yes, thank you. And board members and to the public, I want to, first of all, publicly thank Mr. Paul Russo, who's the director and CEO of Bay Pines VA Healthcare Systems for reaching out to us, and had a very pleasant conversation with Mr. Russo in terms of his desire to serve the veterans of our school district. So the VA has confirmed receipt. So, the VA has confirmed receipt just recently, this evening, of all of our eligible employees, and they'll begin to contact these employees this week. And what I'm speaking about is that to provide vaccinations, COVID vaccines, to all of our employees regardless of age and that have been registered with the VA. The VA is having a very large vaccination event this Saturday, and so they'll be reaching out and talking and calling those individuals. So, and is hoping to schedule as many employees on that particular day, but I believe they'll continue to reach out to not only our employees, but the veterans in our community. So, I just want to thank Mr. Russo, thank you, as we're reaching out and trying to partner with any and all agencies to obtain the choices of our individuals to be vaccinated. I also want to thank the Rotary Club, we talk about partnerships. Rotary Club recently presented a check for $3,500 this last week to Pinellas Park Middle School, Dr. Jason Shedrick, and the donations as Mr. Shedrick is buying, as we're looking at a lot of laptops, he's purchased bags for those laptops, carrying bags for his students. Last year, we had, or when I say last year, we had in the fall, one of the most successful college and career fairs that we didn't have it within our schools, but we went virtual. And it was so successful that we're doing it again, to take place on Wednesday, February 24th, from 6:30 to 8:30. We have 75-plus colleges, universities from across the United States, Division One schools, Florida universities, small schools, large schools, international colleges, out-of-state colleges, private, military academies and technical colleges. And so pleased that we, you know, people have asked me the question, what have you learned and what will you perhaps keep doing? This is one of those. Greater participation, greater participation on both the colleges and technical schools and military, and also greater participation of parents and students. I encourage our folks to explore this with www.pcsb.org/collagefairs, and you just sign up for this, it's be Wednesday at 6:30, and click on the Zoom link, and you can visit as many colleges as you so desire. So, very excited again to be doing this once again. I also want to remind the public that the acceptance period for our magnets and fundamental programs is underway, it ends this Friday at 5:00 PM. So, if you've been selected to one of these programs, you do need to go in and you need to log back in and accept that reservation. So, a lot of people sometimes forget that they have to accept something that is offered there. Again, I direct everyone to our website for reservations.pcsb.org. So much information is on our website. Some of our schools, I always try to, given these times, to really recognize our students in our schools. Here's a great example of that. Ten of our schools are among 41 recipients nationwide of the Students Against Violence Everywhere, with the acronym is SAVE Promise Clubs Stipend Awards. And congratulations to Madeira Beach Fundamental, Lakeview Fundamental, Rollins Elementary, James B. Sandlin, that's K-8IB, the McMullen Booth Elementary School, Carwise, Safety Harbor, Pinellas Park Middle, Hollands and Eastlake High Schools. All 10 clubs will receive $500 stipend cash. SAVE is a student leadership initiative of Sandy Hook Promise. As you know, this board has been so supportive from the very beginning of Sandy Hook Promise, and aims to empower student leaders to take an active role in increasing school safety and preventing different forms of violence in schools and throughout our community. In addition to being recognized for their work, Sandy Hook Promise has asked the 10 schools to showcase and to share their activities and experiences at the organization's Virtual National Youth Summit on April 17th. And three of the schools, Blanton Elementary, Safety Harbor Middle and Hollands High School will be featured in a video during the Sandy Hook Promise Virtual Say Something Pep Rally at 2:00 PM this Thursday on February 25th. So, our partnership with Sandy Hook Promise has truly paid off in tremendous dividends, and I'm very thankful for them. And Donna Sicilian for bringing this organization to our school district and really the benefit that it's had to help students. I also want to say, in the form, in the area of athletics, our girls have two wrestling state championships coached, and that is Claire Bowie and Senior and Hannah Hall, both from Palm Harbor University High School, won the 2021 Florida High School Girls Wrestling State Championships. Claire won the title at the 100-pound weight class in 36 girls in her bracket, and Hannah won the title of 112-pound weight class with 30 schools in her bracket. Certainly, congratulations as we move on and doing things differently, but we're still moving on with many of our athletic competitions all the way to the state level. And I want to close with the opening video because our arts program is so important, and just thank Jonathan Ogul, and follow up on that video, and congratulate all of our students for, and all of our art teachers, and all of the administrators that truly know and truly cherish the visual arts program. All award-winning arts films and animations can be viewed, though, on our PCS Student Virtual Gallery. So, we keep those up there, and again, directing you back to our website. So, thank you, that concludes my comments for this evening.
Good, thank you. All right, items introduced by the school board attorney.
I have no report this evening, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Items introduced by school board members. Are there any board members that would like to? Dr. Carr?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out a couple of items within our consent agenda with regards to some congratulations. We had some new appointments to some leadership positions with Linda Burress being our new middle school, Director of Middle Schools, and congratulations to her. We know those will be big shoes to fill, but she's certainly capable and will make a valuable contribution in this new role. And also, to our new principal at Palm Harbor University High School, Teresa Patterson, for being, assuming that new leadership role and the challenges that come with doing that in the middle of the year, we're grateful to her. And I'm sure that Dr. Gonzalez will help her in any way, and it's nice to have that continuity between individuals. I also want to point out, item 7.16. As we think about current legislation moving forward with regards to its impact on our schools and education, particularly in terms of merging vouchers or other programs, I want us to consider, there are oftentimes very large sums of money, for lack of, are large costs involved with educating our children that are not always factored into those formulas. And this is a wonderful example of that, where as per State Board of Education rule, we're required to provide transportation to individual students who require door-to-door transportation. And when we look at alternatives to public school and how we fund those alternatives, and the level of accountability put in place for our public schools versus some of our non-public schools, it's important that we recognize the value of our public schools. So, I just wanted to point that out because there are so many examples of unfunded requirements that often require us to draw from other places and move things around in ways that sometimes are not required by private or non-public school educational choices. So I think it's really important to note that as decisions move forward in the legislation, and that the public be aware of it as they consider things moving forward, so that we're, as school board members, we are providing information to the public about the implications of legislation. So, that's an important piece I think people should be aware of. And lastly, I just wanted to share with the board that I had the opportunity to attend PCTA Governmental Relationships Committee meeting recently, and express my gratitude for the individual teachers and retired teachers who took the time to share concerns and to invite me to participate and be an active listener in those situations and share any information I had about things that were in place. And to bring back, and of course, extend your and their invitation, I'm sure they'll be, folks get reached, we all have that opportunity, but that there are still a lot of fears, and I think we are all aware of this, but just to make sure it's articulated, the fears that teachers continue to have working in our schools under these conditions of COVID. And while we certainly want to provide every opportunity, we recognize that there are risks involved, and we understand, and we, I can speak for myself, hear you, and I see other people shaking their heads, we hear the fear, and we are visiting schools, and we understand, but at the same time, value the face-to-face education and value you very much. So, thank you for those folks and the retired teachers who also expressed their concerns and their advocacy for teachers being vaccinated, which we've heard some good news already today from the VA. We're grateful to the Health Department for their prior commitments, and I think there were some additional information shared today from the governor. So hopefully, that will help us moving forward. But thank you to the Governmental Relations Committee for their time.
Good, thank you, thank you. Mrs. Edman?
There you go. I would like to thank Mrs. Matway, as well as the Homeless Empowerment Program for taking us on a tour. It allowed me to get a better understanding of our partnerships with the community, as well as how the HEAT program works with HEP in order to provide assistance to families, as well as their connection to our technical college. Also, item 7.11, or 711, thank you, Mr. Smith, for providing that budget amendment. On there, I noticed that we received lots of grants, one for $50,000 from the United Way, as well as several other incentives. And this is just evident that in order for education to be impactful, we have to have partnerships. And thank you, as well as others, for their work with finding grants so that we can continue to provide quality education.
All right, Mr. Dudley?
I just want to remind everyone that even with the COVID, we are still in high school level having sports, and we've just started the, kind of the spring part of the schedule. And the good news is most of these are outdoors, so social distancing is a little bit easier. And we have baseball and softball obviously going on now, we have lacrosse, boys and girls, or men and women if you prefer lacrosse, track, and soccer, and flag football. And I would encourage you, if you can make it, those kids would love having people there. I mean, it's been, you know, been very, very challenging, and if you go outside, adhere to the social distancing, wearing your mask, and those kids would certainly like to have you there. And I encourage you, see if we can give them a little bit of notoriety with all the stuff going on, and it means so much to them, and, you know, particularly the kids that are seniors, and this is their last hurrah in high school. And I think it's important that we try to make the best of the situation. So I encourage you, if you can find the time to go, they'd appreciate it, and it means a lot to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hein?
Every person I know knows that education matters, and that the foundation of education is our teachers and employees. I know in January, I spoke about teachers as essential workers and prioritizing them for vaccines. I certainly still feel strongly about that, and I just want to say thank you to Dr. Grego and our staff who have tried in every way to look at the different relationships to get those vaccines as we can within the parameters, so working with the Health Department to get teachers who are 65 and older, working with the VA to get veterans. I understand today, it was announced that teachers 50 and over, I think the governor announced that today. So that's good, there's still many, many more, of course, and so I just, you know, anybody out there, certainly you can still advocate, obviously, the limitation is the supply, right? But as we know, the supply is increasing, if you read the paper, you'll see that. And so just continuing to advocate as far as teachers and employees around being the priority as that supply is available. But also, in addition to that, I just want to encourage anyone who's listening to support your teachers and just give them a word of encouragement. If you read any education periodicals, you'll see that this is a hard time on teachers. It's a hard time on all of us, right? Absolutely, it's interrupted everything, but when it comes to our teachers, it is a hard time. They bear missing having people at school, helping them, and having the socials, and having the families, and those kinds of things. That community that is created at school isn't just for the families, it's also for our teachers. And so I would just encourage you to, whether it's, you know, email or send a note in, or, you know, whatever it might be. And I would also say that it isn't just for elementary school. I think a lot of times, parents are super engaged in that elementary school, but even after your kids learn to tie their shoes, you still need to be involved in your schools. Still, email your teachers, give them a sign of support, whether it's middle school, high school. So, I just wanted to encourage people, I mean, and I know that, you know, as a PTA person, it's a hard time for PTAs right now, because what do you do? How do you do what you normally do? And so just being creative around that, I would just encourage you to keep that momentum going, and also really start looking to next year as a rebuilding year, right? We have to rebuild our communities next year in a really strong way. So I just want to encourage anybody who's currently involved in those kinds of school support roles, we are going to get to the other side of it, stay with it, put your name in the hat to be nominated for a leadership position next year, but our teachers need you, our schools need you, we all need you, so please just continue to be engaged and support our schools the best you can.
Very good, very good. Any other board members? All right, good, thank you very much. A lot of good points were made with each of the comments that were made tonight. Dr. Corbett, are there any board requests?
No, ma'am, I did not record any tonight.
All righty, good, thank you. And our school board evaluation, our meeting evaluation will be done after we hear from the public participation. So I will adjourn the meeting, then we will have public participation, and then we will do our evaluation. So, at this point in time, hearing no other comments or concerns, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Now, Mrs. Simonetti, do we have speakers from the, for public participation?
Board members and Dr. Grego, we have 11 speakers this evening under general public comments. Our first is Nancy Velardi.
Good, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I have asked our educators to come to see you and tell their stories about teaching in the COVID era. I feel they can be much more eloquent in expressing their experiences and emotions than I, since I do not live it every day. Unfortunately, some have chosen not to speak to you directly due to repercussions they have faced in the past for speaking openly in this venue. If employees cannot freely share their thoughts with those having the authority to rectify those issues, we have a problem. Others could not join us this evening because they are simply physically and emotionally exhausted by the workload that they're carrying right now. I've heard from quite a few members that they feel uncomfortable about the cafeterias in some schools being returned to their original configurations, providing no physical distancing at all. Plexiglass partitions have been removed and seat indicators are gone. Considering the positivity rate of COVID cases in Pinellas keeps creeping up and down, currently at 6.2, it is much too soon to be relaxing any of the safety protocols that have worked in our buildings. Some administrators are telling the teachers that we don't need physical distancing any longer, things should return to normal, children should be Children should be encouraged to work in small groups. Teachers should freely circulate in their classrooms among those children. With limited vaccinations provided for teachers as per the governor and the positivity rate fluctuating as often as it does here in our area, teachers are still aware of their vulnerability. Another concern is the rarity of quarantines around positive COVID cases in our buildings. This may still be a result of the verification process taking too long, causing the quarantine period to expire before contact tracing can be completed. Out of 3,000 cases, over 2,300 have resulted in no quarantine. While I understand the need to keep our students and our teachers in the classroom as much as possible, we also have to assure that we're protecting everybody's health. In Jacksonville, a school went completely virtual for a few weeks due to an outbreak of five cases. I'm not suggesting that we shut down our schools, only that we always err on the side of caution when it comes to quarantines to keep the employees and their students safe. Since there has been no relaxation of protocols here in the administration building or in this boardroom, the schools should be entitled to the same protections. The mask policy is very strictly adhered to in this building, as is appropriate. It must be enforced as stringently in all of our work sites for students, teachers, staff, and administrators equally. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel, although the tunnel is still sort of long. It would be foolhardy to relax our carefully planned strategies for everyone's safety in the final stretch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Meisner.
Good evening.
Good evening. I come here tonight appalled as a parent that the school board, or district, or teachers, or principals would allow my children to be interrogated by a resource officer without my being present. Not that they have been, but that they could be. Also, I am disappointed at the lack of transparency and the availability of guidelines or rubrics at deciding which schools receive SSOs versus SROs. Parents need to be present whenever an officer speaks to their child, and anything less is disrespectful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tracy McConnell.
Good evening.
Hello. Hi, my name is Tracy McConnell and I teach at Pinellas Central Elementary School in second grade. I started the year off with 36 kids virtual, and in January, I started teaching simultaneous. I want you to know that simultaneous teaching is hard. On our 100th day of school, in my classroom meeting, I asked the kids to tell me things that they thought that they had heard me say 100 times before. It was very different than what you might have expected in a normal school year. You got to hear, well, mute your mic and unmute your mic. And of course, my personal pandemic favorite, no naked noses. I recently started teaching a measurement unit and I realized all of a sudden, this is really hard. Seriously, how am I going to teach measurement when I have no, I don't know if the kids have access to tools? And how do you teach measurement to kids when you can't see what they are measuring? Right? So the first thing I had to do was set up to-go bags. So I had to call families and send out emails for them to please come and get math books and rulers. Then I had to do the same thing. I had to follow up with them so that I could get them to actually come and pick up the supplies. Thankfully, I was able to get all of my simultaneous kids, with the exception of one, to come and get their supplies. The problem in the math book that I was using was measure your desk. Yes, I have no idea how long the desk is that the kids are sitting at. But I figured, you know what, I'm going to go with it because ultimately, what is important is the strategy they use, right? Well, one kid told me his desk was 65 feet long. 65 feet long, man, that is like one long desk, right? So I said to the kid, tell me about that, like how did you measure? And after, after some time, I realized, this kid was eyeballing it, man. He didn't even pull out the ruler that I stayed after school on Friday to give the kid. I said, go get your ruler, we use tools to measure. The other problem with simultaneous teaching is that not all the kids turn in their work. So then that means that I have to start texting kids, parents, please have your child turn in their work so that I can see if they understood what I actually taught them today. So, my administration is actually very supportive. I can go to them whenever I need help. But teachers know that the board has limitations because of the governor. But there is an air of distrust between teachers and the district administration. COVID is a deadly disease. We have a right to know when we may have been exposed. Please honor our hard work by telling us when we may have been exposed so that we can protect our families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Ephron McAllister.
Good evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Julie Ephron McAllister. I am the mother to three school-aged children in the Pinellas County school system. When school shut down to in-person learning last March and children were all forced into virtual learning, my oldest child went from being a straight A student to low Cs and D student. Because of how much he struggled with virtual learning, when the options for this school year were presented to us, there was nearly no question that he needed to go back to brick and mortar. The only downside to our choice was the forced masking of students. I strongly believe that the masks should be a choice left to each family. What gives this school board the right to dictate what is best for my family? You don't know what's best for my family, only I know that. Why is it that I can present a religious exemption form and have my children exempt from receiving required immunizations, but I can't make a medical choice regarding having my child wear a mask to school? Back at a November school board meeting, Ms. Lisa Kane brought up to the board that the current Pinellas County mask mandate allows for a very specific exemption for masks on children under 18 years old. This exemption leaves the discretion of using a face covering up to the parent or guardian of the child. I would love to see a similar exemption mirrored into the school board's masking policy to leave the medical choices to the parents and guardians of the children attending brick and mortar schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Brock.
Yeah, can we get a microphone and have him stand off to the side? There you go. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mark Brock and I am from Academy da Vinci. And I think that masks, we shouldn't have to wear because sometimes I can't hear my teacher. Because she wears two masks at once. Me and my classmates have to have dividers up and that makes it very hard to understand them when they're talking.
Well, thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Canant.
Welcome.
Hello. This is being addressed more to Dr. Greggo, school board probably more indirectly, but we're just going to, in this context, talk that you guys are the employers of teachers. Dr. Greggo probably has a more direct line of that than the school board, but that's how I'm addressing it. So, especially after hearing some comments today, I think this is really important. So, you guys have an obligation for the people teaching our children to be responsible, or at least indirectly responsible, for the mental health and stability of your teachers. What happened with the Lysol incident is a direct result of you guys as employers not being able to stabilize, stabilize the mental health of teachers. If you have teachers up here still thinking that they're going to drop dead like flies being in their classrooms, you've done them a real disservice by not presenting new data, factual data, and data we've gathered over the last eight months to see that spread is not occurring in schools. Teachers are not dropping dead. In fact, they're not even getting infected. Right now, we have an incident where a teacher felt so in danger of losing her life that she sprayed a bottle of chemical into a child's mouth and over their body. That's a legal case right now. She's been brought up on charges. She hasn't been fired for whatever reason. But right now, you have an obligation to make sure your teachers and everybody is mentally sane enough to be around our children. Teachers don't have the most at-risk jobs, aside from people putting them on pedestals. Teachers are important, but people are in medical clinics and hospitals all day long without being infected, and they are in way more risk of contracting COVID than our teachers. We've been in school for eight months. We have enough data to see that, almost a year's worth of evidence, to see that schools are not super-spreaders and teachers are no more at risk of profession, in this profession than they are with any others that work with the public or people who are actually sick. I offer to say that they are at less risk than doctors and medical clinics. You owe it to us as parents to do mental checks on the teachers and also communicate that the risk is simply not as they are perceiving. Help them use the latest data to feel safe in their jobs. And if, at the end of the day, if they are not in a good place mentally, you need to go ahead and offer them an exit strategy to seek employment elsewhere. You cannot continue to coddle teachers, allow them to live in fear and feed this fear until another child has suffered yet another incident where they're actually put in the hospital like this child was, or maybe they die next time because the teacher might think it's more appropriate to take that action. A normal place of employment would never allow an erratic employee to wander the halls and not try to help them, get them the help they need or the data they need to feel more secure. You are no different, and in fact, you're held to a higher standard because you're around helpless children. It's not their job to make a teacher feel less nervous. It's also not their job to have to worry whether a teacher is going to react on them. You wouldn't allow disgruntled employee to walk around an office with a gun and not only hope they don't shoot, but not try to disarm them. So my request is you take this seriously and you help inform your teachers that they are as safe as they can be in these incidences, and these are fireable offenses and won't be tolerated. Our children's safety depends on it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paula Stevens.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Greggo, school board members. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Carr for hearing our fear and visiting schools and for Ms. Heine for acknowledging it's hard for teachers right now. Merriam-Webster Dictionary defines fear as the unpleasant, often strong emotion caused by anticipation or awareness of danger and anxious concern or reason for alarm. Currently, we have many instances of anticipation of danger, anxious concern, and reasons for alarm throughout Pinellas County schools. There is a fear of being infected by COVID-19 in and out of the school setting. The fear of being infected by students not wearing appropriately sized masks, wearing masks incorrectly, or even refusing to wear them at all. The fear too many students are in classroom hallways and cafeterias. Fear that the social distance of three feet is not enough. Fear of bringing COVID-19 home to our own children, partners, and elderly relatives. Then there is the fear of not doing enough to support our students. Fear of the loss of instructional time that will affect students for years to come. Fear of failing to meet the needs of students in person and face-to-face while teaching simultaneously. Fear of not completing county mandated assessments on time. Fear that student scores are not where they should be. Fear that being judged for the progress made over the last year and a half as if COVID had never existed. Still more fear, fear that emotional needs of students are not being met. The fear that our students are living daily in trauma. Fear that colleagues are overburdened and unable to gain support. Fear that our leadership has forgotten that there is a global pandemic occurring and it should not be business as usual. Finally, there is the fear that Pinellas County School has become a fear-based environment where fear is the predominant energy. According to an article on Forbes from 2017, "Trust and fear cannot coexist in the same place." People who pretend they can coexist are afraid to admit what their body knows. Managerial fear overpowers trust every time. I bravely face fear as I stand before you and stand up for my fellow educators that are fearful of the repercussions if they take time to come and speak to you or email you. I ask for your help in creating a safe working environment without fear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patrick Mugen.
Good evening. Hi, good evening. So first, I'd hope to just say that I hope this body considers adding virtual public comments to these meetings. There are an extremely large number of staff members that would love to participate. However, they live in far ends of the county and it's difficult for them to get here. Beyond this, the board should be very aware that many staff members are afraid to speak up. They are afraid to come to these meetings and they're afraid to voice their opinions for fear of retribution. As some of you already know, I am not one of these staff members and I have no problem telling you how I feel. As a staff member of Pinellas County Schools and a resident of Pinellas County, it is my right and my duty to voice my concerns. My name is Patrick Mugen and I teach U.S. history and world history at Pinellas Park Middle School. I love my students, my school, and my community, and that is why it is so important that I speak my truth. You are all aware of the enormous responsibilities and the extra burdens that have been placed on your staff. You all also know that your employees must work off-the-clock hours just to keep our heads above water. Whether it's coming in early, staying late, or bringing our work home, Pinellas County School employees, like me and thousands of others, work off-the-clock for free, constantly. You're welcome, by the way. Our families are important and we shouldn't have to choose between getting our work done and spending quality time with our loved ones. A good night's sleep is important for our health and we shouldn't have to choose between finishing up that last bit of work and getting to bed on time. Our personal pursuits are important and we shouldn't have to choose between using our off-days on completing our work that we're not being paid to do or enriching our lives in whatever way we see fit. This board is not valuing our time, but it expects us to give it to you freely. That is not okay and that is not right. Enough is enough. It's time for this body to respect our time and respect our labor. As things stand right now, you are doing neither of those things. With that said, there are so many other specific issues that I do not have time to speak on. But we still have teachers that are teaching simultaneously, high school, and as you heard tonight, elementary and middle school. This adds so much extra burden onto teachers, so much work that is not accounted for in the amount of time that we are given to do our jobs. New teachers are not being onboarded properly and are not being given the supports that they need to succeed. They are being put on success plans before first steps are taken to show them the right way to do things or to train them or to offer them the supports that they need. On-site administrators are giving teachers who take their earned sick time and personal time a hard time for doing so, asking them why they're taking it and questioning whether or not it's valid. We are not one-to-one, technologically speaking, not yet. Teachers don't know if their students have computers yet. They don't know if their students are going to walk in the door with a computer or not. How am I supposed to lesson plan when I don't know what's walking in that door?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Janet Cunningham.
Good evening.
Good evening, board members. My name is Janet Cunningham. I've spoken before you many times before, and I spoke before you a month ago. I'm going to speak on the same topic tonight. I am a teacher who is teaching simultaneously. From the beginning of this school year, that has not changed. I was taught how to use a variety of technology to be able to incorporate my online students into my classroom, and I believe that I've done that very well. My question that I have tonight and my request is the same as last month, to have the board meetings open- meetings open for virtual comments. Many of my fellow teachers cannot or will not come here to speak. The reasons that they won't come include fear of retaliation, fear of COVID that exists within this building due to numbers that they've seen, and absolute exhaustion. But they have stories to tell, and these are stories that I wish the School Board members would hear, of not only the challenges that we faced this school year, which have been unprecedented, but also some of the absolute joys that we have managed to gain in this school year. Not everything is bad, but things could be better. I want to make sure that voices are heard. I want everyone to have a place to have their say. Most of the members that sit up there have had classroom experience, but they've never taught during a pandemic. This is something we have never seen before. The strategies, the skills, the engagement, they're different. The walls, they're different. Some of them are virtual. But our teachers are doing them, and I think it's vital that we come together and recognize what the teachers are doing and recognize all of the staff across the board, non-instructional, the MBAs, the support services, what they've done this year. We've been open all year. We've done this so far, and fortunately, we're still doing it. Please, School Board members, allow us as employees to have a voice. Please integrate the technology that I have in my classroom to be able to access my students into this meeting so I don't stand here next month asking the same thing. You have the technology. You have the ability. Please open it up so that we all will have our voices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ginger Brangle.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? Today, I spent the day doing something that no one would want to do, and that was attend a funeral for a hero in our community. This young man saved countless lives by putting himself in between a drunk driver and the rest of us in the community. On the way back from that service today, I probably saw a dozen or more serious traffic infractions on the way back, and I think we can all agree that the driving in this area seems to be getting worse by the day. And I started thinking, you know, what's going on? And I realized that 10 years ago, we had a driver's ed program in nearly every high school in the district, and over the last 10 years, that has dwindled dramatically. To now, we just have one or two at the schools, and a couple of lucky students win the lottery in the summer to have a couple of weeks of training. Our mission statement is to educate and prepare our students for college, career, and life, and I am a strong believer that life skills are so important. It's not just about the academics or the sports, but those life skills, that common sense that they can use to become successful citizens. Driver's education teaches life skills. It's not just about how to drive the car or how to fix the car, but it's about how to respect each other out there on the roads and how to see that body in that other vehicle as a human being. It's about being a great citizen. We need more of that. I understand that there are some costs involved with getting a certificate to teach. I know there are some paperwork issues, but I would really like the district to consider reinstating some of the driver's ed programs while we are planning for next year. I really feel that this would benefit our students. An entire generation has missed out on these skills, and I think we're starting to see that impact. Driver's education teaches the dangers of careless driving, the dangers of reckless driving, the dangers of impaired driving in a way that students can relate. And so I'm asking, while you are planning for next year, to give some consideration to reinstating these driver's ed programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeremy Kench.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've been back. I've been trying to kind of wait and let things cool off, but I'm still kind of flabbergasted the way things are handled with here. I mean, to speak of fear all night is blowing my mind because everybody's afraid to speak their mind with you people. I mean, this whole circle, what's next offense around this building? I mean, the fear with these masks and everything, but it's died down for the past five weeks. It keeps going down. It's just going to wean off, and everybody's going to play like this was nothing. This has been scared and feared into everybody. God forbid, when a real pandemic does come, how serious are people going to take this? But honestly, I'm here for all sorts of different reasons. I mean, my child being attacked, my wife being attacked, a couple of months ago, still nothing, still no DA talking to us. We've got your video now. I love that. I appreciate it because your video shows your officer literally shoving my wife, my missus, out the door before he yanks her back in, assaulting her with our audio that you guys don't have now with your cameras. But I was told you have audio with all your system here, but your audio, and he still works here, so that's great. Nothing is being done with this because I want this man's job. I don't care what else happens. This man and the female that attacked my daughter for no just cause. You pushed and assaulted her. We have the audio, and your internal affairs has a copy of it, and yet you still work here. Mr. Kench, Mr. Kench. What is going on with this school system? This isn't an opportunity for you to share this with the public. I mean, you haven't had this meeting in tarp, and for what? You've got a lot of parents that want to speak on this and are angry that you keep putting here. Thank you for having the children speak about how great your schools are, and I mean, do, please, make this so they can have it on Zoom or something because a lot of these parents can't make it, and you're not hearing their side. You guys are playing with our children's lives. You're not giving us no choice. My daughter's been kept behind my back without our permission. By your schools, didn't send her home on a bus and didn't call us to tell us. We had to call and chase my daughter down. I've had more than enough incidents with your dang school here and have asked for help I don't know how many times, and yet no phone calls, no reports, no nothing. A court wants to drop our fine and try to drop it a little more after you dropped it to a couple misdemeanors after it was an assault on this officer? Boy, you're a big boy, bud. Love that dance, dancing with women and children. What's wrong with you? If it was your children, what would you be doing without this right now? You all sit here and just listen, 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 and nothing gets said. Nothing gets done. I just don't understand it. I wouldn't have a job. I wouldn't be working. Man, don't see me after you're off, bud. Have a good day, people.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chloe Taylor.
Hello. My name is Chloe. I am 10 years old, and I believe constant mask-wearing for healthy children is wrong. First of all, it is just not common sense. If the age group who die get seriously ill from the virus or age 60 and up and already have two or more comorbidities that needs treatment, where does that put me and all the other healthy children and teachers without a risk at all? The CDC says that children are also not likely to transmit it to each other or to their teachers. Research also shows that masks do not filter out viral particles and cannot claim to do that. Second, I have experienced an increase in bullying at school and learning distractions from mask-wearing. One example, I was standing in an outdoor line, socially distanced, and a kid pushed me because he said I'm not wearing my mask properly. Bullies feel empowered when they get to cover their faces. I have a hard time staying distraction-free in class with my mask on. My teacher always threatens to call my parent or the principal if my mask drops below my nose. I had to get special permission just to breathe in school. If I want to take fresh air breaks, I have to put my head down at my desk or stand in the back of the room where I can't see the whiteboard, and it feels like I'm being punished for just wanting to breathe fresh air. And it opens me up to being bullied even more because by the bullies who like wearing masks. Finally, we should not be taught fear in school. Studies show that the only thing masks do is remind people to be afraid and give them a false sense of security. We want to see our teachers embrace common sense and health instead of being blinded, silly, with unfounded fear. Why should we fear a virus technically no different to us than a seasonal flu to think that we will all die if an asymptomatic virus gets into our bodies? We should be given the choice to wear masks, not force into it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristen Taylor.
Good evening.
Good evening. I don't want to break it. I'm so glad that Chloe came to talk. It's a kid who's 10 years old, kind of lecturing to you guys about fear. Here she is, 10-year-old kid, and I've been listening to the other speakers, and everybody keeps talking about how afraid they are. We should be afraid. We're going to die, and it's so dangerous. But you listen to some of the kids, and they're not afraid. You guys need to step up and just be a good example for our kids. Since when have we come to a world where half the people talk about fear and how afraid they are? What's going on with us? And we're supposed to trust you with our kids? And yet you're spraying Lysol at our kids? This is just disgusting, and I mean, why are we so afraid? Just get a grip. Get control over your life and your health and teach our kids, do a good job on the job, and stop talking about COVID and being afraid, afraid, afraid. Fear is an acronym for False Evidence Appearing Real. So I would recommend that you turn off the TV, stop watching, stop reading the news, and seeing all the fake stuff that they're selling you. Why don't you actually look at the CDC website? Why don't you do your own research and find out that it's turning out to be like the seasonal flu? Okay? So we would, all the parents and all the teachers that really aren't afraid, would like it if everybody could just act like adults, get a grip on their fear, get over it, take control of your health, lose some weight, do something about your diabetes, and you're going to be a much better teacher, much better school administrator, and we'll just get control of the virus. If you're afraid, why don't you get some mental health? Why don't you try praying? There's a good reason why a lot of Christians are not afraid of this. We're not afraid of false evidence appearing real. So I just would appreciate it, and all the parents that keep coming to talk to you if we just get a grip on all this fear and start making good, sound decisions. We let parents come back into the schools. Kids need mentors. Our school, we don't have the mentoring program anymore at lunch. There's no more lunch buddies. These kids are being, they need that, they need the mental health, and we can't do it. We can't meet with guidance counselors anymore for college planning. You know, we have to be face-to-face where we have to like spread out papers in front of each other. We can't do that anymore. You know, I had a really hard time talking with the guidance counselor.
Our next speaker is Susan Bucci.
Good evening. So right now, as individuals, who here is more important than you? It is not a parent, certainly not me. It is not the person sitting next to you. It's you. And what is your highest purpose in this world? There are those who believe our highest purpose is to find joy. It may sound selfish, but when you find that happiness, you spread it. There is no way to contain it. It exudes from your body, and you make a difference. You can't help it. When you are happy, everyone around you benefits. In other words, by taking care of yourself, you will ultimately be taking care of others. A job well done contributes to happiness. So as a member of this board, doing your job well would entail acting in the best interest of the children entrusted to your care. To date, you have been presented with or given access to numerous studies regarding masks. My very good friend, who is a researcher and college professor, had her entire class research the effectiveness of wearing a mask. Aside from her goal of publishing a paper on COVID, she lives with her aging mother who has comorbidities, so she wanted to know once and for all. But you know what she discovered? She said there was no definitive study, one way or the other. Nothing proved the mask worked and nothing to prove that it didn't. About a month later into the research, she concluded that wearing a mask all day was more harmful than most realized. Please keep in mind that no one was funding this study. She needed to find the truth because of her mom. By mandated wearing a mask, you believe you are following the CDC guidelines. However, it is really your job to, it is not your job to be the enforcement bridge for the CDC. Isn't it up to each individual to decide for themselves and their families whether or not to follow the suggestions of the CDC? If you see a child who eats nothing but pasta every day, do you tell the parent that you believe they should be eating vegetables instead? It is up to the parent. Why is this any different? The CDC has stressed wearing masks to protect yourself from the coronavirus, not only others. If you feel more comfortable wearing a mask, then that will be your choice. It is the responsibility of the administrator to protect the student, not the other way around. If you are following the guidelines of the CDC, then if you are wearing a mask, you are not only protecting yourself but the student as well. Your job is to protect the child within the wishes of the parent. You cannot tell them what to eat, and you cannot tell them what meds they should or should not be taking. It is not for the administrator to decide whether or not they should wear a mask. Nobody wants to go against the grain. We want to fit in. But every now and then, a leader will emerge, a leader who will assess the situation and see what truly needs to be done, even if that means going against the grain, and that is the leader who becomes admired and respected. Now more than ever, our children need those leaders. They have their entire lives ahead of them. Many have already been scarred by the decisions that have been made, but I believe it is not too late. There comes a chance in everyone's life when he or she can make a real difference.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Galvin.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. I changed my mask out. First thing I'd like to say is thank you, thank you from all the teachers for having the mask mandate. First thing I'd like to say, I'm not very well-prepared. I didn't sleep much last night because I did, I had my annual evaluation today, and I teach synchronous six out of seven classes, and I had about 30 minutes today off and 15 minutes to eat my lunch in a closet. Nonetheless, this is how synchronous goes. The kids at home can't necessarily hear me because the speakers are in and out, and it depends on what's happening, so I have to get a stick and run over to this box on the corner and poke it. And then sometimes, oh yeah, I can hear them. And then sometimes the kids in the room can't hear the, you know, whatever I'm playing on the videos. But I've gotten good at it now, but it's taken me a while. So I've learned a lot from this, and I think it's been, in some ways, positive. But I want to say, you know, the evaluation, thank you also for modifying that, but it's still stressful to realize that you have to do all these different programs at one time and then ask the kid, hey, what are you doing over there? Are you playing a video game? Which they are. You know, it's all of that going on. You're always touching base with them. And I would say I'm really encouraged by the governor's announcement. and then ask the kid, "Hey, what are you doing over there? Are you playing a video game?" Which they are, you know, it's, it's all of that going on. You're always touching base with them. And I would say I'm really encouraged by the governor's announcement today that teachers over 50 and police officers, we can go to a FEMA site to get a vaccine. I am at Moffitt right now, not for something really horrible, but you go to Moffitt, it's Moffitt, right? So they offered me the vaccine. I'm a lucky person in one respect, so I got the first dose. I'm a little bit less neurotic than I used to be. However, I don't think that the county is offering any kind of flex time for teachers who are getting the vaccines. I'm a little concerned about that. Like, is it only for people? It used to be that you were 65 and older, and there'd be some flex time for you to go get the vaccine. But what about people like me? I don't know what's happening with that. I had to drive to Tampa, so am I getting docked a day and a half? I mean, I'm running back and forth to Moffitt every month, so, and I'm doing all these things. And so what are you guys going to do for us in that respect? I'm a teacher at Thurgood Marshall. Love my school. We only have two administrators and two guidance counselors. I don't really understand why we're in a pandemic and we don't have enough staff at our school. You know, kids don't want to put the mask over their nose. You might as well not wear a mask, you know? So we need a bit more support, I think, for, for fundamental schools. I don't know if they're all understaffed that way. And it's really disheartening to know that I never am told that I will, teachers will never have to quarantine. That's obvious. Okay, well, thank you, but thank you for what you have done.
Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Taz Conley.
And good evening.
Hello, everyone. So first, I want to take a moment and really say thank you to all the teachers and the staff who have been really working through this pandemic. I mean, these, these are unprecedented times, and we've sort of had to manage and change what we normally do. I especially want to appreciate the teachers who have been teaching in person. It is not easy, especially right now. There are a lot of challenges that come with teaching, and now more than ever. So my name is Taz Conley, and I've been a resident of Pinellas County for a couple of years now. I used to live in Polk County, and I was a registered behavior technician there. And I was a contracted worker there, working in the public schools as behavioral support. And that is what I do now as well. I work in the homes, and I work in schools also. And so I wasn't actually going to speak tonight. I was just sort of here to observe how everything works. But then, when I heard the first teacher come up and speak about the challenges of synchronous teaching, I really thought I should say something and add to that because it is a challenge. I actually did an observation not that long ago of a student as part of an initial assessment for behavioral services. And so the teacher of this classroom was synchronous teaching, and there are a lot of challenges that come with, I mean, even before COVID, when you're teaching students with disabilities in inclusive classrooms. And let me tell you, I mean, that is our goal. We want to have inclusive classrooms. One of my focuses is really on inclusive classrooms and improving educational opportunities for all students. So, but there are challenges with that, and now more so than ever. So this particular student had a lot of behaviors, high magnitude property destruction, high magnitude disruptive behaviors, and a lot of it had to do with, at least based on my observation, attention. And so the problem with this was, was that the teacher, when she would attend to the student and the other students in the class, the live class, the behaviors of the student would sort of decrease. But then, when she had to turn her attention away from the students who were in the classroom and sort of attend to the students who were on Zoom, then the behaviors would increase. And this is not only disruptive to that student because obviously if he's engaging in behaviors, he's not learning, but also disrupted the other students as well. And I could tell that this was a challenge for the teacher, and I'd actually spoken with her about that, and she said that, yeah, this is a huge challenge. So I just want to briefly say that I know synchronous teaching is probably something that, you know, was come up with in the shorthand because, you know, we've never seen this before, but maybe coming up with a different strategy would be good and helpful.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
There are no other speakers this evening.
All right. Well, since there are no other speakers, that ends the portion of public participation. Thank you all for being here.